Janaron, School Board Business Administrator and Board Secretary. We are now beginning the April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-one, regular Board of Education meeting for the New Brunswick Public Schools. I will now turn it over to President Mrs. Solis for the opening announcement. Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Janaron. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one to the Home News Tribune, to Star Ledger, and the Court of City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, seventy-eight Byard Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. Jan.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Ms. Sevilla.
Here.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Here.
Mrs. Spencer.
Here.
Ms. Ferella.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Janaron. On the count of three, we'll do the flag salute. One, two, three. Our flag.
Do the flag of the United States of America. The Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, this is a reminder that the reorganization meeting will be held on Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at six P. M. via telephonic conference call. The next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at seven P. M. also via telephonic conference call. We have confirmed that the Spanish line is up and running with Dr. Fontenias. If I could please have a motion to accept the minutes from the March, uh, meetings.
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Janaron.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number four, the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. Uh, for the month of March, we have enrolled nine thousand three hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty students. Uh, we had one case of H. I. B. Uh, there were no cases of suspension. Our staff attendance was at ninety-six percent, and our student attendance was at eighty-nine percent. After thirteen months of virtual learning, uh, due to the COVID pandemic, students have returned for in-person hybrid instruction. And on Monday, April twelfth, we welcome our students in grades pre K through eight. And on Monday, April nineteenth, we welcome back our students in middle school and high schools. I am very pleased with all the schools and the work our staff has done in ensuring a smooth transition back for in-person teaching and learning. I must say I must give many thanks to our administrators for their outstanding leadership. Your planning, your preparation, and your implementation was magnificent. Also, our building and grounds and maintenance team for working diligently to get facilities ready, disseminating the necessary P. P. Es and ensuring proper signage has been posted throughout our buildings in advance of teachers and students returning. I want to thank our teachers and our support staff, the incredible lengths you have gone through to keep students learning before, during, and for sure after this pandemic. I want to thank also our food service team for continuing our meal distribution and working every day in person throughout the pandemic. Thank you. I want to thank our business office as well for ensuring P. P. E. materials and equipment and a lot of the little things were done, purchased, and delivered in time for reopening. I want to thank our H. R. Department for working with district staff and providing the necessary support staff needed, um, going through the trials and tribulations of this new unknown, um, reality. I want to thank our curriculum and instruction department for creating a virtual instruction in-person learning program to support the needs of our teachers, students, and our families. I would like to thank the technology department for making sure we were connected to the web and the technical troubleshooting that happens every day to ensure our students and teachers are connected. I would like to thank our security team for assisting everyone within the buildings, supporting food delivery, and monitoring and enforcing safety protocols and procedures while ensuring the safety for all. And I need to thank our nurses for ensuring we remain abreast of the latest health care information and maintaining a safe environment throughout our schools and buildings. Saying all of that, I definitely would like to thank the Board of Education for their steadfast requirements that we ensure safety first and continue to provide the best education possible for our students during these trying times. And in no particular order, I want to thank Ms. Solis, Mr. Ortiz, Ms. Chikaitis, Ms. Ferella, Ms. Sadowski, Ms. Sevilla, Ms. Seawood, Dr. Caldwell, and Mr. Spencer. We thank you for your leadership and pushing us to continue to be better and to apply innovative approaches to solve complex problems in support of school cultures that work. Ms. Solis, thank you for your leadership the past few years as Board President. And last of all, but probably one of the most important thankles from me and our team is that we want to thank our students and we want to thank our families. We want to thank you for your patience. We want to thank you for your fortitude and your perseverance during these times. You were and you are magnificent, and we will continue to build school cultures that work in your favor. Just also want to give an update on our COVID vaccinations. Last month, I reported we were in the process of coordinating with various agencies to facilitate COVID vaccinations for staff and who wish to get the, staff who wish to get the vaccine. I'm happy to report that through a partnership with Penn Medicine, Princeton Health, we were able to provide close to a hundred and sixty vaccines to our staff and family, family members. Uh, this Thursday, April twenty-ninth, we will be distributing another seventy-five COVID vaccines to our staff and family members. As of today, we can account for about six hundred vaccinations that we have assisted our staff in obtaining. Lastly, I just want to talk about the work that we have been doing, uh, with our human resource department. Uh, we have found, just as we have found creative ways to bring students back to in-person learn, in-person learning, we have also had to be creative in considering how to ensure we have substitute coverage when needed. As a result, we have raised the substitute pay rate from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to a hundred and seventy-five dollars for daily substitutes and for long-term substitutes from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred dollars. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Your words are truly heartfelt and, and well appreciated during these times. I'm sure I speak for all of the board members, um, and reflect the appreciation, um, that the administration has for the board, uh, towards all of you. The, the work that you guys have put in to, um, this, this district has definitely not gone unnoticed, and we appreciate all of it every single day. Um, with that being said, if I could please have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Still moved. Roll call. Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ferella.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, the Student Representative Report. Ms. Kalani Nemhard.
Uh, Ms. Nemhard, just hit star six to unmute yourself in order to give your report.
Okay, yes, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Students that opted for hybrid learning returned to the high school the week of April nineteenth. Students that came to the building were happy to be back. All occupants in the building followed safety protocol with no issues. Students attended their classes and enjoyed lunch in the courtyards throughout the week. The courtyards have been furnished with outdoor tables and chairs that have been appropriately spaced to comply with COVID safety guidelines. Since the start of in-person learning, as a result of students sharing that they feel safe in the building, additional families are asking for their students to join in-person cohorts in the high school. In-person access testing was conducted during the past few weeks and will continue throughout the following weeks to come. Seniors continue to receive universities and college acceptances and scholarship awards. The names of our seniors with the colleges they applied, they, they plan to attend are posted on the bulletin board outside of the guidance counselor's office. Meeting with the student-led prom committee and administrators are ongoing. The prom committee has surveyed seniors to determine what new and meaningful celebration activities will, will take place. The plans we are discussing addresses different scenarios with safety first and a memorable customized prom event for the graduating class of two thousand twenty-one. As always, I am looking forward to the further success, success of the students of New Brunswick High School as we continue to thrive forward in our learning. This concludes my report as Student Representative of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nemhard. We'll move on to item number six, the Facility Committee Report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Madam President. Following. The sidewalk replacement at Roosevelt School on Welton and Redmond Street. The estimate completion for this, uh, project will be May. New, new security cameras and replacement cameras throughout New Brunswick Public School District, which is under resolution for tonight to be approved. The middle school near rear entrance steps and landing replacement has been completed. We're initiating the, uh, air conditioning building process for Roosevelt Livingston and Lincoln School. A resolution is presented tonight to, for New Jersey Department of Education to obtain approval to upgrade the electrical, electric and installation of A. C. for Roosevelt Livingston and Lincoln School. We're replacing the New Brunswick High School gym floors, which is also under resolution tonight. Fifty Jersey Avenue School Community Group met Thursday, April twenty-second, to review the schematics at, of Fifty Jersey Avenue School. The fencing was installed on Fifty Jersey Avenue School property. The site demolition, demolition and environmental work is scheduled to begin June fifteenth with footings and foundations to start August first. We are on schedule for completion of Fifty Jersey Avenue School, which will be completed July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. We will move on to item number seven, the Athletic Committee Report. Mrs. Sadowski.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Athletic Committee yet, met yesterday afternoon. Uh, dates for spring sports are April first to June twelfth. Upcoming home games, events, uh, Thursday, April twenty-ninth, track meet at Memorial Stadium. Saturday, May first, softball versus North Brunswick at ten A. M. home. Saturday, May first, baseball versus Sarerville, eleven A. M. home. Friday, April thirtieth, volleyball versus Edison at five P. M. home. And Thursday, April twenty-ninth, tennis, uh, versus J. P. Stevens at Memorial Stadium, four P. M. Season three athletic recognition, girls volleyball, coaches all division, Ismael Martinez. Um, wrestling, uh, Curly Borbar, third place in states. Donna Walker, fourth place in states. Brian Garcia, twelfth in state, and Jarazelle Bull, eighteenth in the state. The G. M. C. slash Student Committee Athlete of Winter Season Awards. This war, award is newly created by the Greater Middlesex Conference Student Athlete Advisory Committee, was given by the school's Athletic Department for representing what it means to be a leader in athletics. Yoslit Vasquez, uh, girls volleyball. Donna Walker, girls wrestling. Brian Garcia, boys wrestling. And Jarazelle Bull, boys wrestling. Right now, under discussion is a possibility of a sports banquet slash awards night on June third in the courtyard. It will be held outside. Um, it's mostly going to be pretty much an awards night. I would like to thank all of our student athletes who have done everything that they needed to do and more so that they could have a successful athletic season, and, um, they have really shown us the way to do it the right way. I'd also like to thank all of our athletic, um, coaches, um, for this whole year, and everything was about the student athlete. Um, we've been very successful with Play It Smart, and, um, we've all been, uh, really pleased with the outstanding G. P. As that our students have, um, achieved, and that's the most important part of being a student athlete. They are student first, so we're very proud of them. And I'd also like to thank Kalani Nemhard for her beautiful reports, and I'm just sorry that we meet, um, via telephone and that we don't get to chat and really get to know you, and I wish you the best, um, going forward when you graduate as a member of the Zebra Class of two thousand twenty-one. So from this zebra, old zebra, to a young zebra, the best of luck to you in your endeavors going forward, okay? You have a great, great end of the school year. Thank you for everything you've done for the students, too. And that is my report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Sadowski. We will move on to item number eight, the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report. Mrs. Seawood.
Uh, the Association Report for Athletics?
No, we don't have one this time. Nothing this month.
Okay. All right. Madam President, the Curriculum Committee met and also the Policy Committee. So, um, we had, uh, one presentation by Sarah Sterling Laddie, Supervisor of Science, who, um, presented on the Science Department's contribution to Black Lives Matter, your theme, youth activism and principles, loving engagement and empathy. And I remind, um, you all that all departments, all students have been involved in this endeavor. She began by, uh, hosting a Science Department Black Lives Matter Youth Engagement Student Forum at the high school, February eleventh, where Ronaldo Al, Alventaro shared the following. What I want adults to know is that we need to learn about what is happening right now. We have so many questions about the things that are happening. We should be talking about them and learning from them, not just focusing on the same old things from the past that we learn about every year, end quote. And, uh, he was referring to, uh, curriculum information that is usually presented during, um, African American History Month, uh, encouraging us to be more current. Thanks to the assistance of Ronaldo and additional students in the U. S. History Two class, the Science Department was able to create and craft the learning materials that were shared district-wide for grades three through twelve. This lesson sequence allows students to explore their understanding of activism and how young people have contributed to social movements throughout history and in the present day. In addition, students are to identify a social issue of importance to them and determine how they can meaningfully contribute to this cause. And, uh, we had an update from Ms. Hill regarding the Parent University. Uh, we continue to offer workshops for our parents via the Parent University. On March eighteenth, a session was held on Scholastic Literacy Pro, which is an online ebook platform that allows students and their families to search for books by title, author, theme, topic, and/or reading level. The session focused on showing parents how to use the platform to support their child's love of reading. The next Parent Universe is scheduled for, uh, tomorrow. In this session, uh, parents of grade two through seven children will engage in an interactive presentation to provide an overview of how to access online mathematics tools used by students to model their thinking. Parents will learn how to use technology resources connected to the classroom to enhance home-to-school connections. For more information on our Parent University in upcoming sessions, please visit our district website. In addition, next week, um, on May fifth, the Parent University Workshop will be a COVID nineteen informational session for parents. Uh, this session will be led by two community physicians, uh, from Robert Wood Johnson, oh, the medical director of the, uh, Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, Hospitalist Program, and Karen Lynn, Assistant Dean of Global Health. So, uh, we hope we have a good turnout for that, or people will all go for that. We also, uh, reviewed the, uh, curriculum updates for grades one through four, uh, for P. E. and health. Uh, this curriculum was revised with, uh, updated standards. Then we, uh, took a look at the resolutions and policies and regulations were also reviewed and approved, and these are included in our consent agenda. And with that, that concludes, uh, our report.
Thank you so much for your thorough report, Mrs. Seawood. We'll move on to item number nine, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Report by Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam Chair. Um, just a, a couple of things. Uh, this is the, the time of the year when I evaluate the Superintendent Mark Finkelstein, but also we reflect on the year, and it was just a very, very difficult, probably the most difficult year in the commission because, uh, transportation provides a great deal of the revenue, and our transportation services were down by about thirty-five percent. But the commission, um, because there are other revenue sources was, uh, did, did very, very well. But, um, um, obviously, the commission does a lot of New Brunswick busing services and provides a great discount to the, to the, um, to the district, so. Um, but the, the good news is things are looking really good. Students are back, and, um, we think, uh, it's going to be a, a very good end of the year. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Caldwell. I'll move on to item number ten, which is my report. Uh, as, as Dr. Johnson mentioned earlier, this is now the thirteenth month of virtual instruction, and although a lot of our students have gone into the hybrid model, um, they are doing the full virtual, um, experience. And I'm glad that some of the things in our curriculum have been reworked, um, to ensure that, that students and teachers aren't being, uh, burned out and hopefully people aren't experiencing that much fatigue. I know that, um, this has not been an easy year for all of us. Uh, I, I do want to acknowledge the fact that April is National Poetry Month, and if you didn't know this about me, uh, before, just know that I absolutely love poetry, and I wanted to share a poem with all of you this evening that has, um, kind of helped me in, in the last couple of months. This poem is called "Not," N. O. T., and it's by Erin Hansen. You are not your age nor the size of the clothes you wear. You are not a weight or the color of your hair. You are not your name or the dimples in your cheeks. You are all the books you read and all the words you speak. You are your croaky morning voice and the smiles you try to hide. You're the sweetness in your laughter and every tear you've cried. You are the songs you sing so loudly when you know you're all alone. You're the places that you've been to and the one that you call home. You're the thing that you believe in and the people that you love. You're the photos in your bedroom and the future you dream of. You're made of so much beauty, but it seems that you forgot when you decided that you were defined by all the things that you are not. The end. So.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Nice, yeah.
So, I hope, I hope you all enjoy that poem, and I, and I just wanted to share it with you all again because April is National Poetry Month, and I, I just hope that it helps us reflect to not be so, um, tough, tough on ourselves and to kind of forgive ourselves for, for the mistakes that we make in life and just keep in mind that better times are coming. So with that being said, I will move on to item number eleven, the public comments. Mr. Janaron.
Thank you, Mrs. Solis. The first member of the public I'll call on is Ms. Danielle Moore. Ms. Moore.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, first I would like to say, wow, that is a wonderful poem you touched my heart with it. It is, it is a wonderful poem. I would also like to say thank you due to where the matter that I explained to with the Board of Cation with certain things about the teachers. I did review phone call. The issue has been resolved. I do thank you, uh, for your help on that. Uh, my first thing I would love to talk about for safety, and please, I hope you do, listen to me. Far as, Lord, thank you for all the food delivery, all the workers. God bless you for your help, but I've been seeing too many close calls when they're delivering from the buses, when you're delivering the food from the opposite side of the bus. I was told that the drivers are not allowed to put the stop signs on, and I'm asking you, please, would you please allow these bus drivers to put the stop sign on so the delivery, uh, the delivery people can get across the street safely? If the stop sign is not on, you have too many cars going around the buses, and I'm asking you, pray, pray, please, I've been seeing too many close calls for our workers that's been delivering food for our children. Please, I, 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 please allow them to put the stop sign on to let the workers walk across the street. You've had garbage men hit by cars. You've had pedestrians hit by cars. You do not know these, all these areas, and please, I'm asking you, several times, please allow these bus drivers to put the stop signs up to make it safe for the workers delivering the food. They are hard workers, and please make it safe for them. I have to say I am disappointed where it, we were told that the new school was going to be started in April, that it was in Mr. Chuck O'Donnell's, uh, uh, report, meaning, wow, how fast you- meaning, wow, how fast you've knocked down the Lincoln Annex, but still, no work on this, and now you're saying this is supposed to start June fifteenth? This is not what was reported, wh- what was to be done on this school, with the new school, already starting out like, wow, not matching what was said, which I said at the planning board's meeting too as well. But I don't understand why, why are we talking on the phone today? Why aren't we having a meeting in public? If you feel that it's safe for the kids to go back to school, why can't we go have our meetings back in the, in the auditorium? Because you don't want to feel the pressure, because you know that you've not do- done everything the right way, as you said, pressure. And I don't even feel that it's safe to go back to school. The, if everything is basically still shut down in New Brunswick, the courthouse, border social service, social security, library, if all, everything is still shut down, it is not safe to send these kids back to school, and I pray you do not repeat what Franklin just did. Franklin had the lowest COVID nineteen places, cases in the area. Moment they went back to school, they have the highest cases of COVID nineteen. You are really putting these kids at risk? Due to where on April ninth, right before the kids are to go back, New Brunswick reached their one hundred deaths. So I don't feel that COVID nineteen is under control, and you're putting these kids at risk to go back to school. Believe me, I, I know my child isn't learning properly over this computer, but believe me, I would put my child's health before I put my, my child's work, what he's learning. And you are putting these kids at risk, which I don't understand, especially for the high school, middle school, to go back to school one day a week. I, I just pray with what, what all you're do- doing, i- i- believe me, I, I don't, I don't see good news with it, and please, I just don't see why you would even open up the schools back up. So why, and I hear, hear you say that the next meeting in May is gonna be on the telephone as well too? Why? Is it because you don't want to feel the pressure of what you've done wrong? If you're saying it's safe to go back to school, why won't you open up the, the public meetings in the auditorium? No one to say anything on that. But yeah, I hope you do think of what I'm saying, 'cause believe me, I'm a person, and believe me, the city knows when I say, wow, the Lord lets me see things for a reason. Ask Mayor Cahill when I say that, what that means. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. The next member of the public I'll call to...
Preach!
Microphone is Mr. Charles Cradville. Mr. Cradville?
Yes, good evening, Mr. General, members of the board. Charles Cradville from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, and I have a number of questions. First one is on Resolution Y, the Sidebar Agreement. Can you tell me, is that the increase in substitute pay or some other, uh, arrangement?
Mr. General, if you could address that?
It's another arrangement.
Okay, what's the arrangement, what's changing? Sorry, did, did you hear my question?
Yes, I heard it, Mr. Cradville. Did you, I don't know if Mr. General, uh, was able to answer right away or if he wants you to go ahead and use your, your time, and then he'll answer at the end?
That works for me, I'll move on. Um, I do wanna, you know, uh, second the point about if, if, if we're okay with having in-person indoor school, why not in-person meetings? Could you address that, Madam Chair?
Absolutely, we're following state regulations, Mr. Cradville. Uh, so as soon as we are able to do so, as per our governor, we will go ahead and, and take that under advisement.
Okay, I believe other districts are having the in-person meetings, so I'm just curious why this one's not. Uh, I'll move on, though, I do see from your, uh, uh, reorganization meeting agenda that, uh, apparently Marnie McCoy is leaving, being replaced by Zulema Perez. Um, wanted to ask when that change happened or will happen, and if it has anything to do with the lawsuits that were filed alleging racism, uh, by Renee Edgell Smith or the other, uh, uh, similar lawsuit.
Those, those have absolutely nothing to do with, uh, the, the change of position.
Okay, and can you tell me when that change is gonna happen? Is, uh, has she, has she already left, or is she still the, uh, head of HR?
No comment, Mr. Cradville.
So it's, it's, you're not gonna say who's, whether she's the head of HR or not at the moment? Who, who's in charge of Human Resources?
We're in a transitional phase, Mr., um, uh, Cradville, but as of right now, Ms. Perez is in charge.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any comment on the, the drop in turnout in the election this year? It was, uh, a decrease of about thirty-five percent versus last year. Do you think it had anything to do with the, uh, elimination of the voting locations?
Well, from, from the numbers that we've received, uh, I, I believe it's an average of six hundred ninety-five voters in the last, um, six years per election, and this year, we actually had seven hundred and four votes. So it, it seems like we had more, um, than the average over the last six years, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, I'll point out, some of those years, there was only, you know, one person running against the incumbents, uh, and of course, um, you know, we've seen other, other changes over the years, including mail-in ballots, uh, being more, um, popular. But I, I am disappointed, and I do, uh, in my assessment, it is, uh, because of the voter suppression efforts, the closure of those four polling locations. And I'll point out for the record that your business administrator gave false information at the last meeting when he said Roosevelt School was never used for school elections. Of course, that is false, Roosevelt School has always been used for school elections, and I'm pleased that it was opened, uh, thanks to our efforts to keep it open, uh, this year. I wanted to finally ask the superintendent about his, uh, other, uh, districts that he works for. Can, can he enlighten us how, you know, obviously, he's paid very well to be the, the head of this school district. How many other districts has he been paid by during his time here? Uh, I believe I see Bergenfield and Teaneck, possibly Patterson as well. Are there any others, or can he confirm what he's done for these districts and when, why he feels the need to take on additional jobs with other school districts?
Thank you, Mr. Cradville, your time is up currently. Um, the one thing I will say is that I did not say that Roosevelt has not been used at last month. You asked me, and I said I did not recall whether or not Roosevelt School was used last month or not. Um, so, if you...
I, I...
I guess, Miss...
I do, um, I do, uh, Mr. General, want to give Dr. Johnson the opportunity to address, uh, Mr. Cradville, uh, I guess, concern or, or, um, issue with Dr. Johnson taking up other, other, uh, jobs aside from working for the District of New Brunswick.
Thank you, Ms. President. Um, I am a mentor for New Jersey NJPSA. Um, part of their certification process is to, is for mentors to provide support for administrators who would like to receive the administrative certificate. So what happens, um, across districts at times, um, that, you know, uh, people actually need a mentor, um, a lot of superintendents are mentors, um, and, you know, it could be any district that an individual is working for. Thank you, Ms. President.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Solis. That is the only two members of the public that registered to vote to speak, so that concludes the public portion of the meeting.
I just had two comments. One, the superintendent's contract allows him to do exactly what he's doing outside district time. So it's right in the contract from day one. About five years ago, I helped prepare the contract. That was always Dr. Johnson's request to be able to do that, and the board voted on it, and voted on it and it's an extension. I'd like to also record on the, the election, yes, last year was a little higher, but Mr. Rattable always has the ability to distort the facts. Um, last year, the, the height of the pandemic, every resident in New Brunswick was mailed a ballot, and they were able to mail them back in, so we had a high turnout of a thousand seventy-nine. But this year was in accord with the average, and there was no voter suppression. That's absurd, that's a typical catchphrase that he wants to use, but this is an open and fair election like they've always been. And, uh, like the president said, six ninety-five is the average. This year was seven oh-four. You wanna pick and choose? I'll pick last year as a, a unique year in the state of New Jersey where every resident was mailed a ballot. I guarantee, if they did that every year, the turnout would be around one thousand as it was in two thousand twenty. So again, I just had to make the record clear, there was no voter suppression. That's absurd. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hendricks and Mr. General. We will move on, um, with the agenda. If I could just have a motion to approve, um, the Consent Agenda item.
So moved. So moved.
Second?
Second?
Mr. General?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Ms. Varela?
It's our six to unmute yourself.
We may have lost Ms. Varela. Dr. Caldwell?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. Item number thirteen, the Finance Committee Report, Dr. Caldwell?
Uh, yes, Madam, uh, Madam, Madam Chair, if, if it's okay with you, I just wanted to add, it is actually very prestigious to have your superintendent asked to mentor other superintendents. So, so we are very pleased that, uh, Dr. Johnson was asked to do that. I, I have to make that comment. So the, the, the finance report is presented to, uh, to each of you. Is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Your second? Okay.
Mr. General?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chukaitis?
Yes, I've been on pages eighteen and nineteen.
So noted. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, I'd stand on page fifteen.
So noted. Ms. Varela? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, the Personnel Committee Report, Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, Madam President. The Personnel met on April twenty-second. We reviewed, um, all changes, movement, transfers to, uh, staff and personnel, um, and we also reviewed, um, job descriptions for jobs that are, that are coming to district. So, uh, with that being said, um, I need to get a motion to accept the Personnel Report, uh, as amended.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Dr. Caldwell? Dr. Caldwell?
Uh, I said, yes, uh, yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. If I could have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second?
The girl call, Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved, we are adjourned.
Thank you, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have a good night. Be well, bye-bye. Good night.